All right, we're gonna call this meeting to order. It's the regular meeting in the Bellflower City Council. It's Monday, March eleventh, two thousand twenty-four. It's five thirty P M. And we'll have the roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Dutton.
Here.
Councilmember Morse.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Councilmember Santaniz.
Here.
Mayor Coops.
Here. All right, Mr. Smoot, would you please tell us what we're gonna discuss in closed session?
The council will recess to closed session to discuss three items, the three listed on the agenda, three A, B, and C.
Okay, and we have any recusals or conflicts? Does anyone have any conflicts or accusations they wanna talk about this evening?
Do I?
Wendy, I think you're out on A.
I forgot my thing in the car. I meant to go get it.
Here, I got it.
Thank you. Yeah, I need to recuse myself on three A.
Your second page, take a look. I don't think Sunny has any.
It's a personal business interest.
Yeah. Let the record show. Are you cool, Victor? Okay. All right, so Wendy's out for, uh...
Three A.
Three A. And the rest of us are fine. All right, no public comments, so we're gonna recess to closed session.
Yeah, get your packet out of the car.
Good evening, everybody. This is the regular meeting in the Bellflower City Council. It's Monday, March eleventh, two thousand twenty-four, a little after seven, about seven oh five. And we're reconvening from the regular, from the closed session, and there are no reportable actions. Roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Dutton.
Here.
Councilmember Morse.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Councilmember Santaniz.
Here.
Mayor Coops.
Here. At this time, we're gonna have the invocation offered by Councilmember Victor Sanchez, followed by the pledge of allegiance from Joel Hockman, Director of Public Safety. Please stand.
Dear Lord, thank you for every seat that has been filled here today, for each mind and heart that fills the presence of this room. We thank you. Only you truly know what we are setting out to accomplish today. We have an idea, a vision, hints, and a daily introduc- instructions. We have been, we have talents, abilities, and time to work. However, only you can see in perfect details the end of every beginning, every project, every season, every life. Nothing is ever in vain, for even mistakes and missteps are used for good. Bless this meeting today, all those present, as well as the lives of those we will encounter afterward, ready us to make every moment count. Thank, um, amen. Thank you.
Would you please face the flag and join me in saying? I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez, and thank you, Mr. Hockman, for the pledge of allegiance. Our announcements, I'll start off by talking about the city of Bellflower is inviting entrepreneurs and small business owners to participate in the Small Business Kiosk Program. We have an exciting opportunity available to lease kiosk B located on Downtown Boulevard, Bellflower Boulevard at Belmont Street. This program provides a platform to operate a small storefront and to contribute to the growth of our pedestrian activity around town. Apply now to be considered for this community program. For an application, visit the website at www.bellflower.org, or stop by the City Hall, go up to the second floor, pick up a copy for an application, and they're due back in here Friday, April nineteenth. So, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem Ray Dutton, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The Bellflower Farmers Market operates from three P M. to seven P M. every Monday, except for the certain holidays and at the Town Center Plaza. There is a wide selection of fresh produce, bread, food vendors, and handcrafted items. Keep an eye out for the Bellflower Economic Development Department, their team. Uh, at the upcoming markets, they'll also be distributing free downtown Bellflower T-shirts. So stay tuned to the city's social media channels for the announcements on when the Economic Development Team will be giving away the stylist shirts. For questions about the market, please call five six two eight oh four one four two four at extension two zero thirteen. Or to participate as a vendor in the market, visit the website farmandcraftmarket.com/bellflower. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. Councilmember Wendy Morris.
Thank you, Mayor. To help support local business owners, the city of Bellflower is highlighting local businesses in its monthly e-citizen newsletter. Share business updates, special events, holiday celebrations, and more by emailing your information to economic underscore D E V at bellflower.org. For more information on business resources, please call five six two eight zero four one four two four, extension two zero one zero. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Morris. Councilmember Victor Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, Bellflower. The Bellflower Chamber of Commerce invites businesses, service clubs, and the community to network, to a networking opportunity that will be held at the Stand Up Comedy Club in Bellflower. The Saint Patrick's Chamber Chat event will be held this Wednesday, March thirteenth, from four thirty P M. to six P M. Additionally, they have an opportunity on Thursday, March twenty-first, from nine A M. to ten A M. to meet with business owners to share business practices and ideas at its Business-to-Business Casual Connections event. For more information, please call the Bellflower Chamber of Commerce at five six two eight six seven one seven four four. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Councilmember Sunny Santaniz.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. The Fair Housing Foundation is hosting its two thousand twenty-four youth poster contest, which offers a chance to win the first place prize of one hundred seventy-five dollars. The contest is open to students in fourth through eighth grade. Students must create a poster on any size paper with this year's theme, Fair Housing, A Place to Call Home. The poster submission will be, must be in J P E G, P N G, or P D F format, and must be submitted to the email address cprado, that's C P R A D O, at F H F C A dot org by April sixteenth. For more information, please visit www.fhfc.org. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Santaniz. Public comments, Mr. Smoot.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the time set aside for the public to address the city council on matters not listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the city council should come to the podium, be recognized by the mayor, and state your name for the record. If you wish to address the city council on an agenda item, you may do so by approaching the podium as we review that item. You'll be given three minutes to address the city council.
So I invite anyone that'd like to come forward and talk about non-agenda items. City council's here to listen to your concerns. Nobody present tonight that wants to talk to us. So we'll move on to our public hearings. And I'm gonna announce at this time that I'll be conflicted out items eleven A, B, and C, all of having to do with pipelines in the ground. But apparently, since I have property within the area of those pipelines, I'm conflicted out. I don't know how that impacts the property value of me, but nevertheless, legally, I need to abstain from this. And we're gonna hand the gavel over to Mayor Pro Tem Dutton, who's gonna run those meetings while I go in the other room.
All right, Mayor. Mr. Stewart, alight him eleven A. And Mr. uh, Smoot, sorry.
Hey. God. That's a comparison I will take. Uh, actually, I'm gonna turn this one over to Len. He can introduce his team to take this on.
Yeah, good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. Before you tonight, we have three public hearings, all involving different segments of franchise agreements for pipelines here in the city. So tonight, doing the PowerPoint presentation, will be Wong Su Lee, Management Analyst with the Public Works Department. So with that, I'll let him start off with item eleven A.
Good evening, members of the city council. Tonight, I present items eleven A and eleven B, public hearing to consider granting an oil pipeline franchise to S F P P L P and Air Products Manufacturing LLC, and introduce ordinances number fourteen twenty-seven and fourteen twenty-eight. I'd like to start us off with a very brief background on oil pipelines. The oil pipelines can be categorized as either public utility or non-public utility. Public utility oil pipelines are also known as common carrier pipelines, which also, which allow various parties to access the pipelines to transport oil products in exchange for payments. Furthermore, the franchise fees for public utilities are set by the California Public Utilities Code. Therefore, the fees are non-negotiable. On the other hand, we have the non-public utility oil pipelines. Uh, these pipelines are also known as non-common carrier pipelines. These are for the exclusive use by the owners of the pipeline assets. And the non-public utility pipelines, the franchise fees are negotiable. On December fourteenth, nineteen ninety-eight, the city council adopted ordinance number nine forty-one, which granted a twenty-five-year public utility service pipeline franchise agreement to S F P P L P. This twenty-five-year-old franchise agreement expired earlier this year, January twelfth, two thousand twenty-four. And now S F P P seeks to be granted by the city a new franchise agreement for ten years, with the option for one ten-year extension. If the city council adopts ordinance number fourteen twenty-seven, the franchise will be in effect for the ten-year period thirty days after the adoption of ordinance number fourteen twenty-seven. S F P P's pipeline consists of four thousand five hundred twenty-nine linear feet of sixteen-inch pipes. And the S F P P's pipelines run from, run in Alondra Boulevard from Hater Avenue, continuing east to the, uh, continuing east to the County of Los Angeles Metropolitan Transportation Authority Railroad right-of-way between Pacific Avenue and Floravista Street. And ordinance number fourteen twenty-eight for Air Products Manufacturing LLC. Uh, this one has a bit of a longer history. In nineteen ninety-six, Paramount Petroleum purchased a portion of the pipelines from Arco, which was originally assigned and adopted under ordinance eight twenty-three. And in two thousand fourteen, the city council adopted ordinance number twelve seventy-six, which granted a non-public utility pipeline franchise to Paramount Petroleum, which was set to expire in January twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four. On April eighth of two thousand nineteen, the city council approved and adopted resolution number nineteen dash twenty-two, which approved the transfer of the franchise agreement from Paramount Petroleum to Paramount Pipeline LLC. And later last year, November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three, Air Products Manufacturing LLC completed its asset purchase and sales agreement with Paramount Pipeline, and are now the new asset owners of those pipelines. And Paramount Pipeline's franchise agreement expired on January twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four. And as the new asset owners, Air Products now seeks to be granted a new franchise agreement for ten years with the option for one ten-year extension. If the city council adopts ordinance number fourteen twenty-eight, the franchise will be in effect for the ten-year period thirty days after the adoption of ordinance number fourteen twenty-eight. And Air Products Pipeline in the city of Bellflower consists of ten thousand one hundred thirty-nine feet of four-inch pipes. S F P P's pipeline is a public utility, whereas Air Products is a non-public utility. Both proposed franchises are for the duration of ten years with the option for one ten-year extension. Since S F P P is a public utility, there is neither granting nor renewal fee should S F P P elect to extend the franchise agreement. As a non-public utility, Air Products will pay one-time granting fee of ten thousand dollars and a renewal fee of six thousand dollars should they elect to extend the agreement. Both oil companies will be required to post performance bonds in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars as stipulated, within the timeline stipulated in their respective ordinances. The annual franchise fees, or the two thousand twenty-three annual franchise fees for S F P P was three thousand two hundred and two dollars and seventy-six cents. And for Air Products, it was four thousand dollars and forty-nine cents, four thousand four nine dollars and twenty-seven cents. Uh, the franchise fees were calculated by multiplying the rate per linear footage, linear foot, times the total linear feet and the respective C P I adjustments. Staff recommends to open the public hearing, take testimonial and documentary evidence, and after considering the evidence, read by title only, waive further reading, and introduce ordinance number fourteen twenty-seven and fourteen twenty-eight, or alternatively, discuss and take other action related to this item. I would like to note that we do have representatives from Air Products here tonight to answer any technical questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions to staff, guys, gals? Santaniz, go ahead.
Yes, yeah, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Um, first of all, I, my understanding is this is Mr. Lee's first presentation before the city council, and I want to commend you for your very succinct presentation. Uh, you kind of preempted some of my questions already. So very good. Thank you so much for that. Uh, so, I, I love the, um, the non-public utilities. I love them. Because there is, there is renewal fee. Every time there's a renewal contract, and it's negotiable and things like, so I love them. That's why they're here. And the public utilities are not even here, because we don't have any option, right? We don't have a choice. They don't need to be here. So thank you to Air Products for showing up here, that you're showing your interest in renewing the, uh, your, um, your franchise here, and thank you so much for coming. So, um, I guess my question, well, just kind of hypothetical question. Uh, what can we do to make, um, A and C a, a non-public utility? Or we have, we have no choice? Those are public utilities?
Yeah, um, I defer to the city attorney on this one. I'm not quite sure how they categorize themselves, or if the federal government categorizes.
Let me just kind of, before you answer the question, because my notion of utility is just like electricity, gas, water, and, and telephone, things like that, you know? I was wondering about the oil being a, a pub, a public utility.
Mr. Mayor Vice, Vice Mayor and members of the council. So I believe you're asking about three A and three B, not three C, but I assume that the question is equally.
Eleven, eleven, A and C.
Yes.
Eleven A and C, sorry.
Sorry. Eleven, yeah.
Uh-oh.
We're not talking about eleven C.
We're not talking about those. But it's equally applicable, so you don't, so that you don't have to repeat your question.
Okay.
So as I've, on occasion, observed, I'm not going to explain the Sacramento Legislature with regard to what it does. All I can say is that under California law, these particular regulations are codified under the Public Utilities Code, and so it is classified as a public utility pursuant to state law. I can make some educated guesses about why that might be, but I cannot give you the historical reasons for it.
Okay. Um, my, my next question, in terms of insurance, we have the, is it two million dollars insurance?
They have.
Go ahead.
Their, their insurance requirement is at ten million dollars.
Oh, ten million, ten, so good. So we're pretty much covered. Okay. All right, very good. Thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Morris.
How are the pipelines maintained? Like underground? Who's watching them?
So although the city is the one granting the franchise agreements, or members of the city council, although the city grants the franchise agreements, they're heavily regulated by state and federal regulations. They are required to run hydrotesting every five years and report that to this office dated the fire marshal, to make sure that the integrity of the pipelines are secure.
That's it, sorry.
Mr. Sanchez, do you have a question?
Thank you, uh, Mayor Pro Tem. No, I just, more of a comment, I just wanna acknowledge, um, the good work on both ends, both parties to, on section six E and section twelve B, uh, where obviously we, you know, the grantee is a hearing to indemnify us as a city, if there were any ruptures or any kind of, uh, situation that were to arise, and also notify us and, and, you know, expedite the work to resolve the matter. So I think, you know, just from reading through this, there's ample precaution. Um, and they've obviously been a good partner in the community with, and, or, and previously have been well-maintained and well-managed. So I just wanted to comment on those two, section six E and section, uh, twelve A. And I'll leave it at that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders.
And my question also was on insurance. The ten million dollar numbers, what I saw, is that ten million new to this year? Or what was the insurance requirement on the last agreement? Or do we know?
Off the top of our head, I, I don't know exactly what the insurance levels, uh, were for the prior agreement. We can, we can report that back to the council.
I just, just curious, 'cause insurance is kind of poor, and ten million today didn't seem like a lot to me.
Correct.
Other than that, so I, I can ask the.
Yeah, we'll, we'll certainly take a look and come back during second reading.
Yeah, other than that, but yeah, that, this was one, or, ten million is, it's a lot, but it's not a lot when something goes bad. Anyway, that's that. And that's all the questions up here. I'd entertain, somebody entertain a motion for opening the public hearing?
Make a motion to open the public hearing?
Second, oh.
I'll second.
A motion by Santaniz and second by Ms. Morris. Without objection, that'll be the order. Anybody in the public wishing to come up and talk about franchise agreements? How about, uh, the franchisee? Is it? No comment? I would like, I, I got a question about insurance. Or do we know?
Yeah, yes, sir, you have to come up to the podium.
Yeah, there's a spokesman in there, but that company is, is coming up, it's...
My name is Moson Amadi. I've been with Paramount Petroleum and Air Product now for over thirty-seven years. Operating the refinery and the pipeline. Don't have the exact dollar amount of insurance, but all of our pipeline are insured. Uh, we can get the information for you for the magnitude.
So you're with Paramount Petroleum? Is this new company that's?
Right now, I'm with Air Products.
You're with Air Products? But you just, is that a subsidiary of Paramount Pipeline or Petroleum?
No, no. Air Product is, uh, one of the major gas company in the United States and globally. And they just recently purchased the asset in Paramount Refinery, including the pipeline.
Okay, okay.
And as part of that acquisition, I, the former employee of Paramount Petroleum and Wood Energy, become part of the Air Product organization.
Gotcha, okay, so you're with a new organization now? And so our concern, I think we came up with two councils, is insurance limits. And, and in the staff report, I saw ten million is liability coverage. Do you have any idea if that's past experience of what, what it's been, or?
No.
Yeah?
It's been through different organizations.
Two different organizations, okay, okay.
I know I, I know that we do have insurance, but I don't know the amount.
Gotcha.
Allocate it, and it's usually covered, we own forty-seven miles of pipeline, and it covers all the pipeline.
So ten million covers the whole thing? Twenty-seven miles?
I don't know if it's ten million, I don't know where that number came from, but I, there is a number, but I don't have that number.
Okay. When, I know, I would look at it when, I'm not know, the agreements, you know, were har, you know, held harmless to Bellflower, but it... Mr. Stewart, Smoot?
Yeah, as the.
Wow.
Twice. Hey, man, I'll take it. Um, as the city, you are indemnified through these franchise agreements, but obviously, for other instances, they have the insurance for those purposes, and it would set those for that purpose.
Yeah, I won't get that much into the weeds on that. Then, thank you, and as the Public Works Director said, that we can probably, on the second reading, kind of figure out what, where that's going. Thank you, sir. Anybody else wishing to come? Not seeing anybody? Motion to.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, the public hearing is closed. Without objection, that'll be the order. And everybody's good with any more questions to staff?
I have no other questions.
Anybody like to make a motion on these two items that are up here, A and B?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I'd like to make a motion to, for the city council of Bellflower to introduce ordinance fourteen twenty-seven and fourteen twenty-eight.
I'll second.
Got a motion on the floor, right, them eleven A and eleven B? Is that right?
Introduce.
By, uh, Councilmember Sunny Santaniz, and a second by Wendy Morris. Roll call, please. Want me to read it? Want to have somebody read it in it?
I'll go ahead and read the titles in. Ordinance number fourteen twenty-seven, an ordinance, uh, ordinance granting, uh, to S F P P L P, a Delaware Limited Partnership and Oil Pipeline Franchise within the city of Bellflower, an ordinance number fourteen twenty-eight, an ordinance granting and Air Products, granting to Air Products Manufacturing LLC, a Delaware Limited Liability Company, an oil pipeline franchise within the city of Bellflower.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Dutton.
Aye.
Councilmember Morse.
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilmember Santaniz.
Aye.
Good evening, again, members of the city council.
Come in. So item, uh, thirteen B. No, not thirteen B.
Eleven C.
Long page. Eleven C.
Mayor Pro Tem, I'd like to recuse myself at this time for property conflict.
Let the record reflect. Councilmember Sanchez. Has recused himself on... All right, Mr. Lee.
Good evening, members of the city council. Uh, I present item eleven C, the public hearing to grant oil pipeline franchise to S F P P L P, and introduce ordinance number fourteen twenty-nine. Uh, on February twenty-fourth, nineteen ninety-seven, city council adopted ordinance number eight, eight-four, which granted a ten-year public utility pipeline franchise agreement to S F P P L P. That ten-year agreement with the city of Bellflower expired on February twenty-third, two thousand and seven. And S F P P now seeks to be granted by the city a new franchise agreement for ten years with the option for one ten-year extension. If the city council adopts ordinance number fourteen twenty-nine, the franchise will be in effect for the ten-year period thirty days after the adoption of ordinance number fourteen twenty-nine. S F P P's pipelines within the city's right-of-way consist of approximately ten thousand seven hundred and eight feet of sixteen-inch pipes, and approximately fourteen thousand four hundred and twenty-five feet of twenty-four-inch pipes. S F P P's pipeline is a public utility. The duration of their agreement will be ten years with the option for one ten-year extension. As a public utility oil pipeline, S F P P will pay neither granting nor renewal fee. Uh, S F P P will post a performance bond in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars uh, within the timeframe stipulated in the ordinance. The two thousand twenty-three franchise fee was twenty-eight thousand seven hundred forty-eight dollars and sixty-three cents. Staff recommends to open the public hearing, take testimonial and documentary evidence, and after considering the evidence, read by title only, waive further reading, and introduce ordinance number fourteen twenty-nine, or alternatively, discuss... waive further reading, and introduce ordinance number fourteen twenty nine, or alternatively, discuss and take other action related to this item.
Thank you. Any questions to staff?
Mr. Mayor Protem, this is very similar to eleven, eleven A, so I guess the questions have been answered already previously. And you did much better than the first presentation. So you're not better when you have your, you have your two presentations in the bag already, good.
Hey, uh, I'll make a mo-
And make a motion to open the public hearing?
I'll second.
Okay, a motion on the floor by uh Councilmember Sunny Santaynez and a second by Wendy Morris. Uh, without objection, that'll be the order. Anybody in the audience want to come up and talk about pipelines?
Uh, good evening, I just have a couple of questions. Do we know the age of these pipelines? Um, and these are just some of the pipelines in Bellflower, obviously, we have them in a lot of different locations. And then who uh tracks the um marking of the pipeline uh on the surface to show the path of travel? Um, knowing, so we can know where the pipeline lays. Those are my questions.
Honorable Mayor, or Vice Mayor and Councilmembers, um, we would have to reach out to the uh, the franchise and request age of the pipelines. I, I don't have that information off the top of my head of when they were established or anything like that. As far as the markings go, you know, what, what they do, what you'll see in some locations, you'll see, you know, the green stakes on the bike trail that mark the gas lines, um, and then you'll see on the sidewalks, permanent templates that are put in um to mark pipeline locations. Um, we just saw that most recently over at, excuse me, Butterfly Garden, when we did the grand opening over there. Uh, so the pipeline companies are responsible for installing uh those templates and and putting them on the ground.
Yeah, I would say that the entity that regulates them, is it the state or? I mean, for, who manages all the testing of the pipelines and and?
That's managed by the state, correct.
State? That on an annual basis or five year, do we know it at all or?
On the, on the hydrostatic testing that they do, it's typically five years, and the results of those tests are reported back to the state, the proper state agency.
And then they and don't they put pigs down it and measure?
I'm, yeah, I'm not.
Fluids and stuff?
I'm not sure their exact methodology of, of how they do the, that testing, but again, that's something we can try to get a general description of, on what type of tests are performed and how they're performed, and more than happy to bring it back to council and report back to them along with insurance requirements, and then if we're able to determine uh the actual age in which the pipes went into the ground, certainly. We'll bring, we'll find all that information and bring it back as part of the secondary.
I'm sure they're quite old.
Why they're encased in concrete.
Is it something to that we need to find out before we act or?
No, I think it's informational only, I don't think it has any um relevance to granting the franchise.
We have a second reading to come up with.
Yeah, but we're certainly more than happy to bring-
Answer up in the second reading?
Correct.
Anybody else wishing to come up and have a question?
So we done, uh, Mr. Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Sunny Santaynez, second by Wendy Morris, uh, without objection, that'll be the order. What's your pleasure, guys and gals?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, Mr. Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion for the City Council of Bellflower to introduce uh ordinance fourteen twenty nine, an ordinance granting to uh SFPP, a Delaware Limited Partnership, an oil pipeline franchise within the city of Bellflower.
We have a motion by uh Sunny Santaynez and a second by Wendy Morris?
Yes.
Call roll, please.
Mayor Protem Dutton?
Aye.
Councilmember Morse?
Aye.
Councilmember Santaynez?
Aye.
All right. So public hearings have been completed, and we're going to move on to uh, no, number twelve, no ordinances. Item thirteen, uh, consideration item. Uh, Mr. Smoot? Nope?
Mr.?
Yes?
Mayor, if thirteen?
Thirteen, I think you've got a conflict there.
Thirteen A?
Thirteen A.
Yeah, thirteen A, I got a conflict.
All right, so it's nice seeing you.
Property conflict.
Easy come, easy go.
Uh, you and Coobes.
Yeah.
For the record.
For the record, let's show, Mr. Sanchez will be back momentarily, after we have this consideration. Mr. Smoot?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm actually going to hand this one off to Mr. Grecky as well.
Yeah, good evening once again, honorable mayor and councilmembers. Uh, before you this evening, we have a consideration and possible action to authorize the Director of Public Works, Sir Desgnee, to convert uh existing two way stop controls to four way stop controls at two separate locations, one being Jefferson Street in Leahy, and the other one being the next intersection south, which will be at Linden Street in Leahy. So the um, as quick background, uh, this request uh went to the Public Safety Commission uh as part of the first stop or first phase of uh looking at doing uh vehicle improvements, traffic improvements on the roadways here. So the, the commission themselves, when they heard both the items, uh, they approved the Jefferson and Leahy um intersection to move forward, to go through a con, a stop from a, basically two stop signs to four stop signs. Um, they opted not to approve the uh um Linden Street and Leahy Avenue location. So the, this evening, um, I'm bringing it back to the city council uh for consideration of that item uh to look at it based on the traffic engineering and what we're trying to accomplish there. So um, just historically, the past few years, we've, we've tried to address a lot of our two way intersections that we have up and down the street. Uh, the reason being is because usually roadways in each direction are similar in size, they're minor roads. They need a point of control, uh, that point of control, we have found to work best when we're converting them to all stops in all four directions. The, a lot of it has to do with the, the line of sight of vehicles, because the on-street parking in the, in the neighborhoods is very crowded. And then again, it's just generally improving the overall safety of, of an intersection. From the commission meeting, uh, as, as noted, the Public Safety Commission uh did not recommend uh this particular intersection to go through, there, there was, there's not a lot of discussion in the notes or, or to the nature as to why. Uh, so uh, this evening, I'm bringing it back to the council and looking for consideration to either redirect the item back to the Public Safety Commission, or go with the uh engine, the uh Traffic Engineers' report this evening, and just approve it as presented um in the report. With that, I'm more than happy to answer any questions.
All right, any questions of staff, Mr. Santaynez?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I, I was reading this staff report very intently. Um, as Mr. Grecky mentioned, um, we had several of the requests converting two way stops to four way stops, and um if I recall correctly, everything has been approved in the past. In digging more into this item, I looked at the minutes of the meeting, the draft of the minutes, the official minutes are not yet available, but I, I was able to uh read the draft of the minutes, and um, and just like what Mr. Grecky mentioned, there was not much discussion during the plant, during the Public Safety Commission meeting. What, what I'm worried about is um the commission has the right to uh say yea or nay in terms of staff recommendation. But what is missing in my review is there was no reason given why it was not considered. And to me, that is very critical, because we're talking about public safety here. Uh, and I don't want to put our city in jeopardy without clear um reasoning why something like that was not even considered by, by the Public Safety Commission. Uh, so based on that, um, my recommendation is to send this back to the Public City Commission, and have, have them rehear the public, the item, and uh it's up to them to make a decision whether to send it to the city council for approval or deny it, but I want to hear the explanation, the reasoning, why it's not being considered. Because I don't want to go against um the experts' recommendation without a clear reasoning why we're not going forward with the experts' recommendation. So that's my recommendation for the council, take action, and just remind this, send it back to Public Safety Commission for them to rehear this item.
So just the one intersection or both?
Yeah, no, because they're, they're um
The other one you agree with?
They approved the Jefferson and Leahy, but not the Linden and Leahy.
All right.
So I want to, going back to the, your action, the action item, I want to, when it's appropriate, I'll make the motion to approve the Jefferson and Leahy as recommended by the Public City Commission, and then the Linden and Leahy, to send it back to the Public Safety Commission for rehearing.
All right. Ms. Morse, you heard what he's offered, what do you think?
I actually had the same question, because they're like a block apart, and I was also reading the, the report behind it, but there was never a clear understanding of why one was approved and one wasn't. I read where there was a concern on a person that lives right there. And it would block their driveway and stuff, but there wasn't an understanding of, of the, the whys in the house.
Mr. Dutton?
Sant, Ms. Santaynez, did you, um, you said the, the minutes weren't available?
Yes.
You read it?
Minutes weren't available, but the, I saw the draft.
Oh, you saw a draft?
Yeah.
Oh, you got it, I didn't know whether you listened to a tape or what you, oh, okay, there were draft minutes. And there was nothing alluding to why, I mean? There was no comments from any commissioner?
No, and I talked to Mr. Grecky, and there was no reasoning also, so, if you can explain, Mr. Grecky.
Yeah, there, when, when the report was uh presented, uh, from the, the traffic engineer presents the report, and he also notes, because, because we're doing these, these readings or these um, these items, we send notification out to residents within a three hundred foot radius of the location. So we had received a couple comments, phone, they'll, they'll come in via telephone, sometimes through emails, and they were like, you know, basically supporting the, the proposed intersections. During the actual meeting itself, a resident that lives, I believe, on the northeast corner, got up at the podium and, and spoke about the, the fact that if we installed the stop sign right there, he wouldn't be able to back out of his driveway. And based on that public testimony that was given, there did not seem to be a lot of follow-up um in the discussion with the commission, and so what they did is they recommended the approval of one and the denial of the, of the other, based on what appears to be just that interaction, so.
And that was included in our report?
Yeah.
All right, uh, we're going to open it up to uh the public if they'd like to have any comments on this before we go forward and make a motion. Does anybody like to make their comments on these intersections and how they would be impacted? Hi, Chrissy.
Hello. Good evening, mayor and council, uh, Chrissy Burkey, and um, it sounds like it's going to potentially go back to public safety, but um, I, I've been seeing the city put up those four way stops in different neighborhoods around town, and I feel, I feel safer. Um, there's been some, uh, particularly, I know we're not talking about this address, but the one that's on um, Virginia and, or Reeves and Laurel, that, by that baseball field, I've seen that be very helpful. Um, so generally very pro this, I also have a family friend who lives on Leahy and was hit by a car in that little block, so I think doing anything you can do to slow down traffic. Um, I understand it might be hard for that one driveway, um, but hopefully, I don't, I don't know that neighborhood well to know enough if the traffic backs up at that stop sign, but it just seems like anything we can do to slow down the speeding cars in our residential neighborhoods, um, making people come to a full stop is going to be good for our neighborhood safety, especially in that little block of Leahy. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else I could come forward and offer their opinion? You know, ironically, traffic calming has been one of the situations that we're trying to work with, and that was explained by the previous testimony, and we've done this in other areas as well. And I want to give credit where credit is due, and that's Victor Sanchez, a council member who's in the other room, while I ironically can't vote on this because he's conflicted out. But that's been his idea of trying to make sure that our neighborhoods are safer. And he's probably more cognizant of that as he has small children, as does Chrissy. And uh, you know, if we do our best to keep everyone safe, and if someone were to get hurt because we hadn't been attentive to a certain intersection, we'd never forgive ourselves, so we really want to be cautious on how we approve or disprove a potential situation. So we've got our questions from the council, public comments.
I have a question.
And you have a question, okay, go right ahead.
Do you have the, the staff report there that we got? Can you put the, the Google Maps of the intersection where that driveway is?
Ask me how that driveway was ever?
Oh, I was going to check. It's gotta be on your watch. I just wanted to and I got a question for, after it's up there, because and then you went ahead and put a handicap access there on it too. Which required a new approach, it looks like. It's that bad. While they're getting at their, my comments, so I looked at that picture, and it's a Google map picture, I, I'm assuming, and they're just a little funny because of the angle and stuff. And I, I couldn't believe what I was seeing if it was true, and then I drove by it. And what you see in the picture is actually where the driveway is. Well, that's a better picture than I got, because you got to actually Google Maps right now. I just had a still shot. Anyway, this is on, the stop sign is more to the south, that's, we're pointing to the north. And so the cars will be stopping here, but it's the other side of the street, where we backside, I guess that's why he's complaining, but that, the driveway is just right there on the corner. And that's where the garage is.
Well, where else would it be, yeah?
Yeah.
So is that the gentleman who gave testimony and was opposed to the four way?
Yeah.
Yes, the, the, I, I believe the gentleman that was uh at the meeting in person uh was the property owner at this location.
So did the, the traffic engineer take that driveway into account at all, do we know that?
Yes, you know, so
And he knows all about it then?
Yeah, we're, we're aware of it.
Okay, aware of it, and that's not a, and it wouldn't be an issue?
There, there's not a tremendous amount of volume coming up and down Leahy Street, and any vehicle that does stop in, for that moment, one, two, three seconds in which it stopped at the stop bar, absolutely, it will, it will preclude the, the driver from pulling out the driveway, but the vehicle will clear in a matter of seconds.
And I looked at it as more of a, I looked at it at first as a more of a safety issue backing out of the driveway, because you got them stopping and the traffic's coming at you on your side of the street, you're backing out, so you got a better chance, I looked at it that way.
Correct.
I just, just wanted to bring that.
And those were all the reasons
Yeah.
why this, when we took a look at this intersection originally, that's why it met, it met all our parameters on, on what we look to do when we're converting from a two way to four way. Basically, are we improving the overall vehicle and pedestrian safety at that location? That's what we're looking to accomplish.
Thank you for answering my question.
And I don't know how that driveway got approved.
So, Mr. Santaniz, if you'd like to make your motion clear.
Mr. Mayor.
We'll see if we'll get some port.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for the city council of Bellflower to authorize the director of public works or designate to convert existing two-way stop control to four-way stop control on Jefferson Street and Leahy Avenue. And also for the city council of Bellflower to send back the consideration for the conversion of two-way stop control to four-way stop control on Linden and Leahy back to the public safety commission.
Do we have a second for the motion?
Second.
All right, so we have a motion by council member Sunny Santaniz, supported by council member Wendy Morris. Please pull the council.
Mayor Pro Tem Dutton?
Aye.
Council member Morris?
Aye.
Council member Santaniz?
Aye.
Mayor Coops?
Aye. All right, we're going now to 13B, having to do with Superior Court. Mr. Smoot, who do you have going for that? Mr. San, on the call, Mr. Sanchez, back in the room, please.
This item we were presented by our assistant city attorney, Tim Campen.
Let the record show that Mr. Sanchez has returned to the dais. Ready for your report?
Mayor Coops, City Council, good evening. Presented here is Resolution 24-14 and an exhibit attached to it, which is a bail schedule for your consideration and recommendation for approval. By way of background, a bail is the amount a person must pay in order to be released from jail after an arrest and awaiting arraignment. A bail schedule is a list of default amounts of bail for specified offenses. This eliminates the need to have to go to a judge every time to set bail. And it's a tool used by the sheriff when booking people into jail. Presented here is a list of violations of the Bellflower municipal code. Generally speaking, every violation of the any violation of the Bellflower municipal code can be prosecuted as either a misdemeanor or an infraction unless otherwise specifically stated. And in this case, you will notice in the list of offenses that we have a very comprehensive list, but it's not an exhaustive list. It's really focused on violations that affect quality of life issues within the city primarily. By way of reference in Exhibit A to the resolution, you'll notice that the sections are listed in the first column. The class would be whether it can be either an infraction, a misdemeanor, or both, most are both. The title gives a short description of what the violation is. And the bail amount lists the amount of bail. The first three numbers you see there of four would be for infraction violations that are mirroring the administrative fine amounts for the same violations. The fourth number there is generally 500, would be for misdemeanors. The default amount of bail for a misdemeanor municipal code violation in the county is $500, which is the reason we've listed it there. Once, if approved, it will then be presented to the Superior Court for approval. Ultimately, bail must be approved by the court. Truly, the primary purpose of presenting this bail schedule to you is bail schedule is the means by which municipal code offenses are entered into the court's computer system and allows the court to accept criminal complaints with these violations on them. Without the bail schedule, the court will not accept criminal complaints of the Bellflower municipal code. The bail schedule's not been updated since 2005. And in that last update, it really designated almost every offense as an infraction. So this is opening up the ability to prosecute as misdemeanors, many offenses that weren't available before, as well as changes in the municipal code in the last 20 years. You will notice that there is a provision that permits the city manager to make technical adjustments and modifications to the bail schedule. These are not for any substantive changes, but when we submit the bail schedule to the court, there are times when the court will send it back and request that we make certain modifications to the document itself so that they will accept it. They are very particular. We've done our best to get this in a position where we believe it should be acceptable. But in our experience, it can take one or two back and forths between the city and the court before the court finally accepts it. And this resolution allows the flexibility to make those technical adjustments to the document itself. With that, the recommendation is that the city council approve the bail schedule as presented, unless you have any questions or comments or anything you'd like to ask me.
All right, thank you for your report. Ms. Morris, would you have any questions of your attorney?
So just randomly, what's set in front of me, unauthorized possession of a catalytic converter. So somebody has a catalytic converter in their possession, then that would be the first infraction, the $100, then, oh, actually, it's $500. And then subsequently, if they're caught again and again, it would just go, second one would be another five. That's how this would go?
And council member, could you?
I'm on page eight, eight, the second section.
What number, like?
Oh, nine point oh four point one one zero.
Yes, so the numbers are different for some offenses because the city council's previously authorized heightened fines administratively. And so we use that as a guide for our bail schedule. And so certain offenses do have higher than 500. And so that is reflected in possession or having a catalytic converter without the proper documentation to show lawful possession of it. You'll see something similar with fireworks, for example.
I'm good, sorry.
All right, Mr. Dutton, have any questions?
Just want to make sure understood.
Is dumpster diving in here? Because I couldn't find it. I thought that was a $1,000 one. I was looking for a $1,000 one and
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the $1,000 was reduced several years ago from 1,000 to, I think, 500.
We were overbailing?
Yes, we were
We got caught?
We were diving too deep.
Okay.
On that. Look at your $500 column, maybe you'll find it there.
Yeah, okay.
Page nine, thirteen point
I remember. That's fine. I was just looking, I was skimming for the $1,000 one and I didn't see it. So that was the easy way, but I'd been corrected. We got our hands slapped, I guess. So with that said, littering, and I don't think that's on here. It doesn't have to be. But I've saw littering signs, you know, $1,500. Sometimes they put them, I guess, in other cities or whatever, or state law. I'm comparing littering, my memory of seeing signs like that, to our dumping. Dumping couches, dumping furniture, dirt, rocks, it's 100 bucks to start. And I think littering, the first offenses, I'm assuming, I'm assuming more? I don't know, I'm just comparing. That was the only thing that I was thinking. I know it's not a, it's a work in progress document. But dumping furniture under the 91 overpass on these residential streets is a big thing for me.
If, if I may, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just for comparison's sake, this is not a fine schedule. This is the bail schedule.
Oh, it's a bail, okay.
So that's the difference.
There we go, okay.
And some of the fines that you're talking about are actually administrative citation fines rather than criminal fines. And as way of background, the city has not prosecuted criminally violations of the municipal code for at least eight years. So this is, as Mr. Campen indicated, this is a revision of a bail schedule that was originally adopted in 2003?
Five.
2005. So this is a renewal process. And really, all of this information will be inputted into the Superior Court's system so that we can actually prosecute criminally violations of the municipal code.
Thank you for straightening me out. That's where I got off rails. Thank you. No further comment or questions, Mayor?
Mr. Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Carl, a quick question or to either attorney today. The allowing of a illicit discharge or the, is that, are we talking handgun discharge? Are we talking?
Sewer.
Oh, I was going to say, because this kind of a fine for that kind of a or this kind of a bail schedule would not warrant, okay, let me see. The other question I have is related to, there's a lot of consistency or pattern here. And from a previous comment that you answered, Mayor Pro Tem Dutton, my assumption is that the state regulates a lot of the amounts as to where we can go or not go, because I could see that some of these could be a lot higher. Just curious.
So, and I don't want to step on Mr. Campen's toes. He's the prosecution expert. But let me, let me give you a context. I'm sure all of you have heard of the no cash bail concept. So right now, LA County, for example, has had two bail schedules in place for penal code violations. And it's going through a process to make a determination of what is allowed in terms of zero bail and what requires additional bail, that type of thing. This, per Mr. Campen's presentation, this schedule actually has to be approved by the presiding judge of the Los Angeles Superior Court system. And that's one of the reasons that Mr. Campen pointed out that the clause in the resolution allows the city manager to make technical changes so that we can get it into the system so we can start prosecuting cases. To your point, it's both a, both state laws statutorily, but it's also, there are two pending court cases right now with regard to no cash bail schedules that have, well, depending on one's perspective, either tied your hands or allowed for greater leeway with regard to no cash bails. So that's something that the presiding judge will take a look at and make a determination on before either approving or sending back this bail schedule for modifications. But yes, it's controlled to a great extent by state law and also the court system itself. And Mr. Campen, correct me if I'm wrong or add to it.
I just, I think it would be helpful to understand that this is a bail schedule for bailing out while you're pending your first court appearance. It does not represent, except for the infractions, it does not represent what the fines would be. The fines are limited by state law at $1,000 for a misdemeanor. That's the most you can go, with some exceptions. But for our purposes, it's limited at $1,000. So even if you have a $5,000 or $1,500 fine that appears on the paper, that is for administrative purposes. And if we were pursuing it administratively, we use that as a guide for bail. But really, this is truly just a mechanism to allow us to prosecute criminally. And we have to turn in this document to be able to get these code sections into the court system to allow that to happen.
Understood. Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if I could just tag team on that, this is one of the reasons that we've discussed before up until this point about the civil enforcement of violations of the municipal code. And the reason for that is, is because when we prosecute, and I use that term for purposes of this discussion, when we prosecute on a civil level, either through administrative citations or filing public nuisances or whatever, the ability of the city to both recover its legal costs and also the bulk of the fines that are collected is much greater than in a criminal context.
Mayor, just a follow-up question on this subject matter. Wasn't the zero-based, zero-bail, zero-bail policy adopted by the LA Superior Court?
It has not been adopted yet. I believe it's under review.
I thought it was adopted last year.
Been used, isn't it? It's been implemented.
With certain offenses. With certain offenses. It's not, it's not as expansive as some would like. But for some low-level offenses, so in some ways, our bails higher than comparable offenses?
Make some, this is my question, if the zero-bail policy was adapted by the Superior Court, even on a limited basis, how will we implement this bail policy? Because we're under the LA Superior Court system.
So just for clarification, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, well, let me put this into context. One, our office is only authorized to prosecute violations of the municipal code. There is pending legislation that would potentially allow us as a general law city, as opposed to a charter city, would allow the city attorney's office to prosecute violations of state law. Currently, we aren't able to do that. So much of the discussion with regard to no cash bail systems has to do with prosecutions of state law, penal code violations. Our bail schedule, the one that we're proposing to the Superior Court, is really controlled by the policy by the city council, but it has to be approved by the LA Superior Court. And the reason that I reemphasize that is because, again, there are two pending court cases that have challenged the bail schedule previously approved by the LA Superior Court with regard to state law violations. And the caveat, the warning that I'm putting out there is because of those two cases and because of the overall policy with regard to no cash bail, it may be that the Superior Court will reduce the bail amounts in our proposed bail schedule. That's something that's outside of the city's control. That's simply a matter of state law that the LA Superior Court can do because that's what it's charged with doing. So along those lines, I just want to be perfectly clear on that point. I also wanted to reemphasize that as a general law city that what we're prosecuting are not penal code violations. What we're prosecuting is exactly what's in this bail schedule, which are violations of the municipal code, not penal code violations and vehicle code violations.
Mr. Campen, or Mr. Mayor, pardon me?
Yes.
Mr. Campen, does this bail schedule include spectators at street takeovers?
It does, and at a higher bail amount. I should note that as a practical matter, no one's going to be held on any of these bails by the sheriff's department realistically. And that has to do with priorities in keeping beds available in jail and other factors. So again, I would not look to this as a mechanism to hold people in jail until we get them in front of a judge in and of themselves. It's simply part of a larger process of affecting the ability to criminally prosecute these offenses.
Does it include the drivers that are doing the street takeovers?
It includes all aspects of exhibition of speed, what we call exhibition of speed, which is street racing.
That's where you would, that's where they would be under. And I understand the unlikelihood of being able to use some of this. It doesn't sound like this would override the zero bail, unless it's approved.
That would be at the discretion of the court, that court ultimately sets bail. And so the court could change all these numbers theoretically. And so, and we don't have any control over that. But we have to submit something to the court for their consideration.
Very good. All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Santaniz, did you have any other questions to follow up?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just a clarification, Mr. Campen, on page 509, 12.40.010 unlawfully within a park. Must be something missing there.
And could you repeat the code section, please?
12.40.010 parentheses A, unlawfully within park.
Yes.
What's unlawfully within park?
What are we doing there? What's unlawful?
Within park.
It's, sorry, but, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I believe that has to do when the parks are closed. So if you're present in a park, say it's sundown, when the parks are closed, so you're within the park at that point. So this is the classic, no loitering within a park after it's closed. Loitering has been deemed constitutionally vague by the California Supreme Court, so we don't use the term loitering.
Oh, okay, okay.
Their very presence within those types of closed areas constitutes a violation.
Oh, I see. Generally, outside the allowable hours.
Hours, okay.
But it's any time that you're not allowed to be in the park, it's being in the park.
Ah, okay.
All right.
Ah, okay, all right. Uh, on, on page three of nine, uh, eight point three six point zero three zero, A thirteen, attractive nuisance, is there any nuisance that's attractive?
Uh, uh, attractive nuisance is a, is a legal term of art. That just basically means something that attracts people to come into your property, um, and, and, and which, which is unlawful.
Oh, I see, you're, it's, okay.
So a, a, a classic example would be an abandoned, um, building, and unhoused people might find their way to break in and get access to it.
It attracts people.
Yes.
Okay.
Attracts people.
Gotcha.
Um, and, and their occupation is a nuisance.
I see, okay, just like those, uh, three buildings in LA.
Like many in LA.
It's a good example. There you go, all right, very good.
Those tall ones?
Yeah, the tall, tall buildings, okay, very good, thank you, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
Maybe you met an old girlfriend or something, an attractive nuisance.
Who's, where's our HR director?
All the questions been asked? If anyone from the public would like to come forward and offer some testimony on this item? Seeing none, I.
Then I'll make a motion.
All right.
If you like a motion.
Go for it.
I'd like to, uh, make a motion to consider adoption, uh, number twenty-four dash fourteen, resolution establishing a revised and updated bail schedule for misdemeanor and infraction violations of the Bellflower Municipal Code and requesting, uh, the presiding judge of Los Angeles County Superior Court to approve the bail schedule for misdemeanor and infraction violations of the Bellflower Municipal Code.
All right, so we have a motion by Mayor Protem Dutton, any support for this motion?
I'll second.
All right. Wendy, you hold the record for seconds, we're gonna call you Wendy the second right now. So, so we have a motion by Mayor Protem Ray Dutton, supported by Wendy Morse. Please poll the council.
Mayor Protem Dutton.
Aye.
Councilmember Morse.
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilmember Sanzinez.
Aye.
Mayor Coops.
Aye. Moving on to the consent calendar, does, uh, anyone have anything they'd like to pull for discussion or recuse themselves from item? I guess we're all in on this one, huh? Nobody has any, it's a short one, we don't have nearly as many items to consider. So I'm looking for a motion for approval.
Blue the calendar.
All right. So we have a motion by Mayor Protem Ray Dutton, supported by Councilmember Sunny Sanzinez. Please poll the council.
Mayor Protem Dutton.
Aye.
Councilmember Morse.
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilmember Sanzinez.
Aye.
Mayor Coops.
Aye.
Wendy, that consent calendar wasn't worth seconding because there's only four items on it.
Don't waste your second, is what you're trying to say.
So I just wasted my second, is what you're saying?
Hey, you only get a certain amount of it.
The shortest one I've ever taken, this has been up here.
Councilmember Sunny Sanzinez on council reports, have anything to report?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, uh, request that for the City Council of Bellflower to adjourn this meeting in memory of Frederick Pete View. Uh, Frederick View was born on March sixth, nineteen thirty-seven, in San Diego to Herschel and Angela Whistler. He peacefully passed away on February twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, at the age of eighty-six. He spent the last sixty-two years living in the seat of Bellflower. Uh, Frederick, uh, fondly known as Pete, was a loving husband of Carol View. Uh, Carol View happened to my children's kindergarten children at Washington Elementary School, uh, for incredible sixty-seven years. And together, they raised three children, Kathleen Callahan, Kristen Evans, and David View. A hard-working switchman, he was retired from Packbell Telepon Company after thirty years of service. After his long career, he worked with his lifetime friend Bud Moore, making deliveries and doing home repairs for his children. In his retirement, he found joy in pursuing his passion for fishing. He was a proud grandfather of four children, um, Jonathan, Kayleen, Ryan, and Kendall, and a delighted great-grandfather of two, Henrik and Kiran. A devoted husband and father, he survived his loving wife Carol, his daughters and daughter-in-law, he was preceded in death by his son David. Uh, funeral services are scheduled for March sixteen, twenty twenty-four, at All Souls Cemetery. Our deepest sympathies and heartfelt condolences go out to the entire View family. So with that, again, I'd like to request this meeting to be adjourned in his memory.
We will do that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Protem Dutton.
No comments tonight.
Councilmember Morse.
No comment.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just, uh, want to highlight, um, our tour at the, at the New Hope Shelter that we had with Senator Archuleta. Um, it was, uh, definitely an eye-opener for him, and he understands a little bit better of the work that we're doing. Um, and I know he, he said he'll look to see how he can help us, and, and so I just want to highlight that tour. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez, I was along on that tour. And, uh, not often do we go into the, into the shelter because, you know, it's a private area. But to be able to see how well it's kept and it's, uh, very, very compatible to trying to get people back on their feet again. Uh, I was fascinated to learn that they even have on Thursday nights from eight to ten karaoke night, where they get them up and demonstrate their singing skills. But, uh, it's a safe place, it's a clean place, i- it's a good place. And, uh, I think we're all proud of what we've accomplished there, of all the cities in the area. I think Whittier, Long Beach, and Bellflower are about the only count, people, only cities that have, uh, a homeless shelter. And, uh, we do our best to, uh, help people that are on the street. Not all of them want to take our hospitality, but many of them have. And, uh, we're doing our best to maintain and keep that a viable entity. So, uh, we're gonna adjourn tonight in memory of Frederick Boe, but in, before we do that, we have some incomplete business to accomplish in closed session. So we're gonna go back into closed session, and I'll come back out here and, uh, do the adjournment to March twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four at the appropriate time. But we're gonna go back into the back room and figure out a few more items before we resume the adjournment. So thank you all for coming, and it is now about, uh, eight twenty. It is now nine thirty-five, and we're gonna adjourn this meeting in memory of Frederick View. And we are adjourned until, uh, March twenty-fifth at five-thirty in the afternoon. No reportable actions from our closed session. Now we're adjourned.
So what did you ladies talk about?
Us, yeah.